I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, as we approach your throne tonight, we're so thankful that we can. And Father, we thank you for the fact that you are God that answers prayer. We thank you for James Vineyard being with us tonight. Lord, we ask that you continue to have your hand upon him and, Lord, to continue to heal his body. We also pray, Lord, for our police that are out tonight that are patrolling. We ask, Lord, that you build a hedge around them, protect them, get them home safely. We also pray, Lord, to be with our firemen as well. We thank you for their service, Lord, protect them. And Father, as we meet here tonight, we ask, Lord, that we're seeking wisdom from you. And Father, we just ask that, Lord, you'd give us what we need. And we thank you for our counsel and our mayor. But we also pray that you give them wisdom, Lord, as they govern the affairs of our city. And Father, I do pray tonight that everything that is said and done tonight would be that to glorify thy name. And Father, we just seek your face tonight, for we do ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Here.
Raymond?
Here.
Rivero?
Here.
Vineyard?
Present.
Price?
Here.
We have a quorum. Approval of agenda as posted or as amended?
I don't know if this is appropriate for tonight, but we have a representative here from the Make-A-Wish Foundation. And it was indicated to me that they wanted to make a presentation this evening. So if we can amend the agenda so as to we have a presentation at the beginning, I would make that motion.
I'll second it. Call for the question.
Berkman?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Rivero?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion carries. Do a presentation right now.
Kayla was supposed to be here, but she's not, so she may come in later. But I still wanted to make a statement on behalf of the Make-A-Wish Foundation.
Ma'am, if you would, I'm sorry. Would you please identify yourself and your organization for the record, please?
Yes. My name is Cora Gonzalez, and I'm a volunteer for Make-A-Wish, for the foundation for Central California. And we work in the county, in Merced County. So I just wanted to thank the City Council. I make a little brief statement. Thank you on behalf of Make-A-Wish Foundation of Central California. We are very grateful for the city of Atwater to honor Kayla Damian for Mayor of the Day. Most of you saw her in the parade. Make-A-Wish grants wishes to children with life-threatening illnesses. Kayla's wish is to go on a Disneyland cruise. Make-A-Wish thinks out of the box to see how they can enhance each wish and by collaborating with community and agencies such as the city to bring joy, strength, and hope to Kayla for a lifetime. Thank you on behalf of Make-A-Wish.
Thank you very much. And I can just say Kayla was in the Fourth of July Parade with me, and she was also at the Fourth of July fireworks display out at Castle that evening. And really strong, very brave little girl for all the trials and tribulations that she's going through right now. And very, very emotional day, and I hope it was as joyful for her as it was for the rest of us. So are there any other items to the agenda that any member of the council would like to amend? Seeing none, entertain a motion for approval. So moved.
Second.
Call for the question.
Berkman?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Rivero?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion carries. Comments from the public. At this time, any person may comment on any item which is not on the agenda. Please state your name and address for the record. Action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. To comment on an item that is on the agenda, please wait until the item is read for consideration. Please submit comments to a maximum of five minutes.
Are there any members of the audience tonight that wish to address the City Council? Lori?
Hi, my name is Lori Johnson. My address is 1675 Drakely. Mayor Price, City Council members, if you're keeping count, you know this is the fourth time I have come before you as a very concerned citizen. I have asked your city manager, Petro, where the $1,750 cash came from that he put in my hand in the living room of my home. Then I directed the very same question at you, Mayor Price. You had the same response, not a word. Then I asked the council members as a whole, knowing he is your employee, and since he doesn't want to publicly own up to any wrongdoing, it is now your responsibility to take the blame yourselves or get rid of the problem. It didn't come from some vague county agency that gave it to him to give to us. I'm guessing you let him get by with yet another of many of lies. He is making the mayor and council members look incompetent and disrespecting all of you and all of the residents of Atwater. We have every right to know where that cash came from. I am also concerned that I am the only resident asking that question. I don't know if he thought we were desperate enough to overlook all the violations of our rights and all of the suffering we have been through from the years of harassment by the Atwater PD that we would take that money meant for a cellphone and labor materials and forget about everything else. As Americans in this great country, we have freedoms, and our constitutional rights must be respected. If not, the violators, criminals, should be prosecuted. If that Merced County grand jury picks our legitimate claim, which they should, it shows a lot of criminal acts, cover-ups, conspiracies, intimidating witnesses, skipping police procedures, due process, getting warrants, protecting the residents, and upholding the law, and not targeting one couple on Drakely Avenue for 12 years, causing me a lot of health issues, and trying to make my husband, Richard, go off so he can be committed? Or why else would the Atwater PD send emails of pictures with him protesting and say to his doctor, "It's your patient, you need to control him"? And why did they call mental health saying to leave the same message for his doctor? This cash issue should be a real concern for all Atwater residents. Look how far they are willing to go to silence us. We've lost almost everything and are now four months behind on our mortgage, but the city already knew that. Are you checking on that just to see how much longer this has to go on before we are out of our home and out of Atwater? Would that mean you have won? Well, don't count on it. Any of that, don't count on any of that. I will still live in my small, modest home while you all live in the big house, enjoying your new roommates. You think you won't have to pay for all of your crimes since you've gotten by with them for so long. You have targeted the wrong couple. We will not quit until we see justice served.
Certainly.
You know, I'm not, my name's Richard Johnson. Live at 1675 Drakely Avenue. I'm not as good a speaker or writer as she is, but it's at our home where Frank Petro, Lieutenant Joseph, off-duty officers, code enforcement, and Public Works conspired to raid our home and violate our constitutional rights when they tried to silence us by destroying and stealing our legal rights, signs, protesting the city's total disregard for us as Atwater residents, by ignoring our pleas for help for so long and allowing chief slash city manager, which was violating California Governor Code 1099A, allowing him to destroy our lives from years of constant harassment, false charges, unlawful detainment, false arrest, unlawful imprisonment, and changing charges after I was already arrested and booked into Merced County Jail. He called and switched charges. Merced County Sheriff's over there said they can't, he was telling them on the phone, I was right there. You can't do that. That's never been done before. And obviously, he convinced them to do it, changed the charge, made it a felony. Now I don't have that felony now, okay? Believe me, I know everything that went on in my life because it's a day-to-day struggle Also, District Attorney Larry Morse changing charges and creating new false charges on me. And I'd like to know if you guys have anything to do with it, with Larry Morse and the corruption there, with Petro? I've heard a lot of things, I'm not sure how true they are, but I do know one thing. They did this to me one time before for disturbing the peace. It was a totally different situation. Why returned a cellphone with pornography on it? Next thing you know, I'm put in jail for doing the right thing because I bought a phone and I went to return it. It's done. I'm just showing a little bit of what they've done to us. I'm returning a cellphone that my daughter, it was supposed to be a new phone. Petro had me put in jail for disturbing the peace, and we went to a seven-day trial because I did nothing wrong. So that's where a lot of taxpayers' money is going for disturbing the peace, I guess. That's all I got to say for now. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the City Council at this time?
Mike Teeter, used to be resident here. I'm homeless now, so I don't have a, you know, I go from city to city wherever. But, you know, it's funny, this gentleman here, because where I'm at up in Northern California, I watch YouTube. And, you know, anyways, I was a resident when I was a code enforcement officer here at the city of Atwater. And I wouldn't have done anything illegal like the code enforcement officer did. But, you know, he got in the middle of the work that I had to do, was expected, and he was arrested. But you know what? They're honorable people. In fact, their life currently, right now, is parallel to my lawsuit with you guys. I talk to every one of you, except Joe, because you've been on the council for so long and never had a chance. But I said, "You guys are the CEOs of this city. You know, you run this city. The employees, not Gina, not Frank, but when employees have issues, you guys need to listen." Now granted, you can't take action, like tell somebody to pay the phone bill or the water bill or whatever, but, you know, take interest, don't keep your head in the sand. And from my perspective up north, I'm watching this lady ask you people three F-ing times, "Where did Frank Petro come up with 170 cash?" Any more, okay. Anybody in my book knows if anybody in the government is trying to give me cash, that's illegal, that's some hot money. Where did you get it? You give it to them in a check so you can at least follow that back. Come on, suspicious. You let your employees, the chief, whatever, trespass on a citizen of Atwater's personal property, seize his signs which is First Amendment protected. Now granted, I had formal change as a code enforcement officer, blah, blah, blah. But code enforcement, anybody should know, First Amendment protected signs, property, there's due process. That's a constitutional right, okay? That was all discarded. Okay, first off, to destroy my life. I lost my home. I lost my job. The 16 years that I faithfully put here because I pissed off Chief, and I won't, you know, anyways. So with my lawsuit going, that's been going, and now thankfully, it's going to go a lot faster, because this has got to stop. The citizens of this town got to know that they live in the best town. That's why I chose to have a career here, raise all of my children and my grandchildren here. But I'll tell you what, lately, it's gone to hell. Just before I became homeless, I had a hell of a time trying to pay bills when my water bill, I would carry $5, $10 over every month and then have to pay a $22 late fee? And I asked a couple of you to bring that up. That's illegal. You can't charge that much, but nobody seems to care. But the one good thing is I have a family member who does engineering for CNN, and I talked to him a while back about coming and doing investigative thing, but at the time, it was only me that was affected. So they're like, "Well, that's not newsworthy." But believe me, now with the Johnsons case and a couple others that I was able to pull up, believe me, this is now getting popped open, and the people are going to get a good look where their monies went. Where did all the money get transferred over to here and here? It seemed like the one gal who was a city manager who, you know, was a while back told council straight up, "You guys are spending money that you shouldn't be, but you guys keep shuffling it to a different..." And so instead of standing up, they fire her. And that doesn't defend her at all, but I'm just saying, "Come on, guys, you're elected to run this, not the city manager, not Gina, not whoever. You guys." You know, when I tried to call one of you and you refused to call me back because we were told by the attorney, and the attorney can't tell you not to call me, I voted for your butt. The only thing we can talk about is my actual lawsuit against the city. But they can't tell you not to talk to me. And if they do, I want to know that, because then I'll go after them. But the law firm that I have that's representing me, you know, they're going to be happy with the Johnsons, because it's funny, the one that's doing the criminal charge, his public defender, is the same one that bailed me out when I had bogus law, you know, criminal charges filed against me here from Petro. And their public defender was great. He was an awesome man. And he's defending this guy. And you know what? Come on, city. Guys, elections are coming up, and believe me, I don't want to see anybody that's going to sit on this council again that hasn't done anything to save the city from any more harm. But I know you guys have had a hard job, and, you know, I do appreciate the time that you guys do put, you know, as a volunteer, but just don't forget the employees. We still have a lot of unemployed, unemployed, you know, employees, et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, just don't forget the employees. All right.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak to the City Council this evening? Supervisor McDaniel.
I guess I'll go ahead and take this opportunity to give us an update. I wasn't on the agenda last meeting, and I wasn't on the agenda this meeting. So if you guys don't mind, I could give you an update on the county at this time.
Thank you.
So anyway, so the Board of Supervisors will be holding a Small Business Administrative Workshop. It's going to be out at Castle Commerce Center. I was able to reach out to Don Galick, who is the deputy director for Small Business Administration here in California. She decided to come down here and do this. The workshop will be from 1:30 to 3:30 on Wednesday, August 31st, at Castle Airport Conference Center. That's here in Atwater. The workshop is free to attend and is designed to help small business owners or potential entrepreneurs access and utilize SBA programs, start, run, and grow businesses. Also, I'd like to announce that the Human Services Agency within the county will be opening its Castle site. Well, it's actually open now, but we'll be doing an open house. In an effort to improve services, the Merced County Human Services Agency has co-located several of its sites into one centralized location at Castle Commerce Center. The recently opened site is located at 1920 Commerce Care Way. The consolidation will expand access to financial, nutritional, medical, employment programs while streamlining several other services as well. I also like to announce mobile district hours. As a reminder, I hold my mobile district hours here each month at Atwater City Hall. They're scheduled the fourth Thursday of each month from 1:30 to 3:30. During the mobile district office hours, I'm joined with representatives from Atwater City Council, as well as offices of Congressman Jim Costas and Anthony Canel and Assembly Member Adam Gray. Final budget will be coming up September 20th, 11:00 a.m. at the Board of Supervisors. Also like to say, Community Economic Development, Google is exercising an option to extend their lease at Castle. This will likely bring more personnel to the site, which is now seeing an excess of $6 million in improvements out of Castle. Google will now remain at Castle through 2020. The county is currently working with a couple of prospects at Castle, one of which is a green tech business that is evaluating sites that would bring about 50 new jobs. On the planning side, the Board of Supervisors adopted a housing element in the recent weeks. And there's also a new update I wanted to bring up. I didn't have it printed out, and I apologize. But during our last meeting, the Board of Supervisors voted to join Stanislaus and San Joaquin Counties in the development of an economic analysis of the state water board's proposed revision of the Bay Delta Plan, which could result in additional flows from the Merced River and the tributaries being released into the delta. The economic analysis will address the economic cost of water shortage, impact of water shortages on the local economy, impact of surface water reduction in groundwater resources, impact on hydroelectric resources, and impact on local recreation. Merced County is contributing $20,000 to this economic analysis. I think you saw, MID just released their economic analysis as well, the potential hurt that could happen to our local farmers. So are there any questions?
Any questions for Supervisor McDaniel? Thank you, Darren.
I think I did that in five minutes.
Yeah, you're bad. You're bad. Is there anyone else wishing to address the City Council? Seeing none?
Yeah, actually, I'd like to stand up first, but actually, I don't want to take this moment now. It's possible for me to take this moment later because it's coming from the audience.
Is this with respect to an agenda item?
Yes. This, okay.
Okay.
Background information has been provided on all matters listed under the consent calendar, and these items are considered to be routine. All items under the consent calendar are normally approved by one motion. If discussion is requested on any item, that item will be removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Are there any items on the consent calendar that the council would like to remove for your separate consideration? Are there any members of the audience that wish to remove any items on the consent calendar for separate consideration? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Call for the question.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Berkman?
Yes.
Rivero?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion carries. Funding and budget matters. Treasures report for the month of July 2016.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. I'll be filling in for Mr. Heller. Right in front of you have July's Treasures Report.
Are there any items on the Treasures Report that any council member may have? Mr. Vineyard?
Ms. Doyle, just questioning, we had a beginning balance of 1-plus million, at the ending balance of 3 million. Can you explain the reason behind that?
For general fund, the beginning balance is negative 1 million, but the ending balance is negative 3.1 million. The reason for that, we made a prepayment for CalPERS retirement benefits, which was 2.14 million. We made the prepayment so we can save some money on the interest side. So by making that prepayment, we saved about $75,000 in interest.
Thank you.
Could you also, well, does this report reflect the corrected amount for the major age funds?
No, I was moving to that after we're done with the Treasures Report.
Okay.
Any other questions on the Treasures Report?
Are there any other comments or questions for the Treasures Report? Any comments or questions from the audience? If not, entertain a motion.
So moved.
I'll second. And call for the question.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Berkman?
Yes.
Rivero?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I would like to update city council and our citizens on Major H fund balance. We had a Major H fund budget update meeting last week on August 11th. So there was a correction on that report. I missed to update one cell on the Excel sheet, so which kind of brought our fund balance very low. So I do have updated information on that. So for the beginning of fiscal year 1516, the fund balance was $869,000. Revenue for Major H for fiscal year 1516 is 1.76 million. All the expenditures, including salaries, all the benefits, communication, risk management charges, vehicle leases, vehicle purchase, we did purchase two SUVs beginning of this last fiscal year, then also including a transfer of 1.1 million to general fund. Our total expenditures are 2 million. Then we did have a shortfall of $264,000 for Major H, but our ending fund balance is $605,000. So that was my mistake, so it was the corrected balance is $605,000 for ending of fiscal year 1516. I do want to make a note that our books are still open until end of this month, so there might be some minor changes. But I did receive revenue for May and June months for last year, so that is included in there.
Okay.
And I do have one more update to provide basically to the council and to the citizens. Many of you are aware that we were doing utilities audit. It was a large project where we wanted to see if our system is accurate, and we do have all the addresses in the system, and nobody is getting free services from the city. So that was a large project. Total accounts or addresses we found, which were not in the system, were 185 accounts. Then 72 of those are vacant addresses. Then we did deliver notices to 113 residents to come and open an account with the city. So total... So total revenue that we discovered through this project is $202,000. And, um, so far we have collected about $44,000 of that project, uh, that revenue we discovered. The rest will be, uh, collected in installment payments in either one, two, three years timeframe. And, uh, that's pretty much all I have.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments pertaining to the budgetary matters? Okay. And, Mr. Lee, did you get a revised, uh, accounting for Measure H?
Yes, I did.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you.
Public hearings. Proposed commercial development for Marketplace at the Colony, located at the northwest and southwest corner of Buick Road and Juniper Avenue.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members, and also members of the public that are here tonight. Appreciate your participation in this, uh, potentially historic evening, let's say. Um, Mayor and Council Members, in terms of background, as you're aware, uh, several years ago, the city of Atwater took over approximately 29 acres. Uh, it was in the CFD 190 in Melrose District that had some financial issues. And this property was, uh, deeded to the city in lieu of foreclosure, and then it became the city council's responsibility, more or less, to try to, uh, find a buyer for the property, to use the proceeds to help pay down the district debt. Uh, as you know, that was accomplished a few years ago, and we're, we're seeing the next steps in the progress of that property tonight. Uh, before you tonight, there are several items for your consideration. Uh, we have the mitigated negative declaration with the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Uh, we have four different resolutions for your consideration. One addresses the planned development master plan. One is regarding the final development plan. We also have two parcel maps that are for consideration. So these are the steps that are going to facilitate the development of that lot, those two lots, and to bring new investment into the community, new businesses, new jobs. Um, we had a very productive meeting, special meeting of the CDR, the Community Development Resources Commission, back on August 2nd. We had a good turnout from the public that came to ask a lot of very good questions about it. Uh, I will give you a little bit of, of an update about some of the conditions that were modified at the request of the condition, at the request of the commission. Uh, the commission at that evening recommended your consideration for approval of this. And so this is the, the second part of a two-part process needed to take action and finalize, uh, the approvals. Um, I did want to point out that, uh, tonight would be the final discretionary approval for the project. Um, should you approve the project this evening, going forward, the approvals that are needed are going to be more administrative. They're going to be things like building permits, grading drainage permits, encroachment permits. Potentially, it could come back if there's a, a modification to the development plan that's not deemed minor, something that's more significant. Uh, but by and large, this is the last process or the last step of discretionary approvals. Uh, it's helpful for the community to understand that this is going to be a project that's going to take many years to develop. This is not going to be done at one time. Uh, the applicant is getting the approvals, which are here tonight for your consideration. The implementation of the development's going to be done by other people over time. And so with that in mind, we comprehensively reviewed the project. Uh, we reviewed it for traffic. We did a thorough negative declaration with all the required, uh, issues that have to be looked at under the California Environment Quality Act. I did want to point out tonight that if we have discussion or concerns about those, I have a couple people who, more or less, are an extension of, of my staff. They've been very helpful throughout the process. Uh, we have, uh, Jose Benavides tonight. He worked on the traffic, worked very closely with the applicant's traffic engineer. I believe, so, I believe we also have Dez Johnson in the, in the audience tonight. Dez is here. Dez worked on the environmental document that, that's included for your consideration, as well as the, uh, mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Uh, on behalf of the applicant, I did want to point out that we do have, uh, Philip Romero. He's with the Mobian Horn. Uh, he did the, uh, the maps, has been involved with the process since a very, very early on, uh, stage. And so Philip's here tonight, sitting here, taking notes for, for his client, and, um, he's been very helpful to work with. So again, just to kind of give you an overview of what the project is, um, this is a potential project that could add 249,000 square feet of commercial space, uh, to the community. About 1,307 parking stalls that, that go along with the development. Uh, currently, as you know, there's two separate parcels. The maps that would be proposed would add additional subdivisions to that. Uh, the northwest corner, which is just a little over 20 acres, would create 14 new parcels. The southwest corner, which is just under nine acres, would create six new parcels. Uh, the type of development would be for commercial development. Uh, this is going to be a commercial shopping center. Uh, it could have neighborhood uses. It could have more intensive uses. Um, but it's not planned for housing. It's not planned for industrial uses. It's not open space. It's not a park. It is a commercial development project. Uh, with that in mind, it has all the impacts that a commercial development impact, that a commercial development project has. It will have traffic. It will have some noise. It will have some lighting. Uh, it will be open to serve the public. Um, but it's going to be a commercial project. Now again, the implementation of it's going to be over many, many years. The plan that you have tonight and what your actions are going to constitute will however, create a design theme that all future applicants have to follow. It's a California Mission Design Theme. It's going to incorporate the mitigation measures that are outlined in the resolutions and the mitigated negative declaration document. That's very important because it outlines what specific parcel, as it develops, has to do what specific things primarily related to traffic mitigations. Uh, so even though this will be done by other people over time, this sets the conditions and the method by which it's going to be done. Uh, at the commission meeting, there were a couple concerns. They wanted to have what they called couplers, which we've added to the resolutions for your consideration tonight. Basically, a coupler is that, uh, if you're looking at one resolution, it mirrors and references all the conditions of the other one. The idea being, the idea was that if someone just looked at one resolution, uh, they would think that's all the conditions, but the coupler references the other three or four, so they're all tied together. Uh, so that's been incorporated for your consideration. Uh, there was one other issue the commission asked us to look into, and it's still an ongoing issue that we're working on. Uh, we have a meeting set up with the school district and Buick Colony representatives. Unfortunately, it's a very busy time of the year for them, and the meeting date is on the 24th. And, uh, the commission wanted the school to consider, would they allow for the closure of the left-hand turn pocket into the parking area next to the theater and the sports fields at Buick Colony High School. Uh, the preliminary feedback I got from the, uh, administration there was that probably would not work for them. And so we'll have a more formalized meeting this Wednesday to get their formal feedback. Uh, that doesn't really necessarily change anything with regard to the scale of the project. Doesn't really affect anything regarding the overall traffic implementation of the project. It would just allow for one other, uh, entrance into the, the shopping center. However, if it was closed, it could potentially great, create a lot of issues for the school with regard to access. So, um, for the time being, it's an issue that we're just going to let you know that we're going to evaluate, and we can address, uh, between staff, city engineer, in the future if need be. Um, but I just wanted to bring that up to your attention tonight. That was an issue the commission pointed out. Uh, Mayor and Council Members, at the commission meeting, we went through a lot of very detailed discussion regarding the different subareas of the negative declaration document. Um, I didn't intend to do that tonight, although we could. What I thought we could do, Mayor, is, um, when I'm done providing the presentation, allow for the public to come in, ask questions, and then, uh, the council may have questions as well. And then between myself, uh, the people who worked on the project in association with the city can help respond. I did have a few slides I wanted to go through to kind of give you some orientation about the project, and maybe clarify just a couple things real Prior to the commission meeting, uh, we had several people in attendance who, uh, saw this exhibit, uh, which is part of a, um, public notice they received in the mail. And they're very concerned when they saw this, that the project was going to take their private property. I, I just want to clarify tonight, as I did at the commission meeting, that that is not the case. What this is, is a radius map. This shows you all, all the parcels that are within 300 feet of the project area boundary. That's basically the outline of the two commercial properties. And so pursuant to the way the law is set up, we have to provide public notice to all the registered property owners. Not a tenant, but a registered property owner. So, this is a map showing that and that only. This is not a map of anyone, taking anyone's property. So I want to make sure that I'm consistent tonight, as I was at the last meeting, to explain that. But this is the group that received notification by mail. In addition to, to the mail notification, we also provide at least 10-day notice in the paper, which we publicized. Um, so I wanted to get that out there first, if anyone had any concerns about that. This is an aerial, so to speak, a site layout. This is the planned development master plan, the site layout of the project. As you can see, there's two, two, two parcels right now, uh, kind of divided by Juniper Avenue. So you can see the setup in the northwest corner. This is going diagonal or sideways, so it's a little bit hard to understand. But north would be to the right, and south would be to the left. Uh, you can see the Buick, Buick Colony High School would be, uh, to the southeast corner. And, uh, it's obviously an intensive use of the site, as I mentioned before, just under 250,000 square feet, a little bit over 1,300 proposed parking stalls. Uh, in addition to the onsite improvements, which are going to include, you know, utilities, the development, storm drainage systems, uh, there are also mitigation measures for traffic. And so the maps that are associated with the project provide for the right-of-way that's needed to be dedicated so that the traffic mitigation measures can be implemented. Uh, I just wanted to go through them briefly just to give you some understanding. Uh, in the future, they would include a new signal at Augusta and Juniper Avenue. It would include some additional widening of the lanes and shifting at Buick and Juniper to accommodate, uh, dedicated right-turn lanes going southbound on Buick and also going, uh, eastbound on Juniper Avenue. Uh, we also provided some language that, uh, on Buick Road, if it, if a, you know, if one of the project sites wants to have access to making a left turn on Buick, they have to evaluate that. There could be some other improvements that are needed. Currently, all the medians are going to stay as-is in that area, which kind of prohibits some of the left turns, primarily right turns. Uh, same on Buick Road, south of Juniper. Primarily, everything is right-in, right-out. Uh, the intersection at Buick Road, as you're going north, will be widened to accommodate a safe U-turn. Currently, you can do it now, but the roadway is narrow. Often, you're seeing three-point turnarounds to make that. And so those are some of the mitigation measures, uh, set up for traffic to, to accommodate the project. And again, those will be done underneath the situation where each parcel has specific conditions. We'll do them as they're developed. Uh, this applicant, as I, I just want to make sure I'm clear, is not going to master plan this. They're not going to do the development. It's going to be parceled and sold to different people who will do it over time. Little bit of a detail of the south parcel. You kind of get a sense of how it's laid out. Uh, there's a pad there on the Juniper side, could potentially add or accommodate fast food type uses. We have another one, another pad on the Buick side, uh, corner, basically, uh, you know, a, a major type tenant. It shows pharmacy, but again, the uses could change over time. Uh, you have potentially some retail shops, uh, kind of adjacent to the residential neighborhood there. Retail shops are basically spaces that could be subdivided. They can have walls put in or modified as needed to accommodate potential uses down the road. Um, and then also, they're showing a grocery store, however, that use could also change. But the, the purpose of kind of having the footprint and the intent is that way we can kind of capture comprehensively the impacts at one point. We can assess all the issues that might be there, which we've done that in your environmental document, the traffic mitigation measures. On the north side, uh, we broke it down to a couple slides. Again, this kind of shows you the layout, potentially a, a, uh, fast food type tenant along Juniper Avenue, uh, potentially a gas station at the corner intersection, a couple more spaces, uh, on one of the entrances along Buick Road, uh, with drive-throughs for food service, uh, retail spaces near the frontage, again, flexible, can be modified as needed, depending on the tenants that might go in there. And then also identifying, um, you know, three major, larger s- size buildings that, um, you know, no specific tenants right now, but can be used in the future for a variety of uses that would be consistent with your, your, all your codes, uh, to go into those spaces. And this would be the extension of that. This picks up from where the other one left off, going all the way up to the canal there. Again, just kind of providing for some retail shop spaces, some additional smaller major boxes, and another potential fast food type, type use on the frontage. Uh, I did also want to show you real quickly kind of the layout of the parcel map. And so this one would, would, uh, correspond to the larger, the 20-acre parcel. Uh, again, it, it, the detail might not be real clear from looking at this, but this does provide for the right-of-way that's been required to mitigate for the traffic improvements at the various locations. Uh, the parcels are set up so that, uh, you know, you'd have a building on one piece of it, and it'd have shared access, shared parking, and also have the ability to, uh, provide utilities across property lines. There will be what's called a CCNRs, covenants, conditions, and restrictions that are accorded with the map that will provide for those going forward. That way, in the future, someone can't say, "You can't access my, you can't access my property to, to get to yours." That won't be the case. It'll all be accommodated through the CCNRs to allow it to function comprehensively and kind of, uh, you know, it, with each other. And again, this is the detail on the smaller lot, uh, showing the, the layout of the potential parcels that are there. Uh, so the, the footprints of the buildings you saw kind of overlay on those, and each one or a couple of them kind of fit on those proposed parcel lines. And again, it's just like the other one, have shared parking, shared access, the ability to have utilities to cross property lines, uh, as needed. And earlier I mentioned that you have several different resolutions. This primarily constitutes the master plan and the maps. We also did discuss the final development plan. I'm going to quickly, uh, turn on the, the laptop real quickly, Mayor. As I stated earlier, there's going to be an integrated design theme. It's basically a California Mission theme, uh, use of a lot of materials and colors that are, that you see a lot in Central Valley, uh, have, you know, influences from Spanish Mission, California architecture. And so these are not the elevations of the proposed buildings. This is the style upon which the future buildings will, will follow. And so, um, this is consistent with the, uh, what we have in terms of our PD process and the guidelines that we provide for commercial development. Um, so as we go forward, as we're working at the more detailed level of reviewing the plans, we're going to make sure that each proposed project that comes on, on board has some tie-ins back to these themes. It won't, there'll have to be some consistent theme, and this will be basically how, how it's connected. In addition to this, um, we also have a landscape plan that was submitted that shows basically the layout or the intended purpose of, of how the whole area will work together. And so each specific portion will kind of implement that piece of the landscape plan. And so that represents kind of the last piece that we're talking about, which is the final development Mayor, I've said quite a bit in a short period of time. Uh, again, this is a public hearing. Uh, it might be appropriate to, uh, perhaps get feedback from the public, and then with your support, we can address questions, concerns. You might have questions yourselves, and then we can take it from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Any council members have any quick comments or questions for Mr. Seeing none, uh, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak to this particular item, please come to the podium, state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Lisa McKenzie, and I live at
I attended the last meeting, but I needed time to process before I was able to ask the questions. So I have questions concerning the Elk Ridge Court residents because it's very, very close to the future grocery store. As far as the future solid or block wall, I have a question about the future seven-foot solid block wall that will separate the commercial development with the homes along Elk Ridge Court, especially those that will have their backyard facing the future grocery store. What will the offset be from their existing wood fence to the future solid wall? Or will the fence be replaced with the future solid wall? Regarding the back of the grocery store and privacy issues, the plans show that the distance between the back of the future grocery store wall and the property line that separates the Elk Ridge residents to be only 45 feet and 2 inches wide. That is extremely close. Is there any way that the grocery store building could be moved more north and away from the property line?
If I might, do you have, how many questions do you have? What I'm wondering is if we shouldn't be addressing these as you convey them.
Oh, that's fine. I don't know, about 15, maybe? I don't know.
Oh, my.
Well, I'm sorry.
Okay. No, that's fine. That's fine. That's what we're here for.
We need five minutes.
I'm sorry.
We need, we do have five minutes.
Right.
Yeah, I talk fast.
Okay, very good. Go ahead. I'll give you extra time.
I can go faster. I know they're into reading. Okay. What is the height of the roof, including the parapet wall, if any, in the back of the future grocery store? Will the closed-circuit TV camera have a line of view towards the backyard? Regarding the back of the grocery store, what will the residents see once the grocery store is completed? Will there be any mechanical units, such as an HVAC system, visible from the Elk Ridge Court residence backyard? Regarding the back of the grocery store and the noise issues, in comparison with other grocery stores versus my residence is 45-feet distance, Food for Less is open 24 hours and the closest resident is 170 feet away. Save Mart's open from 6:00 to 12:00 a.m. and the closest resident is 425 feet away. Walmart is open from 7:00 until 12:00 a.m. and the nearest residence is 660 feet away. And I do have also a question that I added about the HVAC. Will it run 24/7? And if so, if it's only 45 feet away from my residence, will there be a wall around it to reduce the noise? Okay, I'm almost done. All right. Which grocery store will occupy the new building? What would their hours be? Will the new development follow the city noise ordinance, 8.44.0408, complying to quiet time of 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.? P.m.? Or 8:00 p.m.? A.m.? And just one more thing. The traffic issues at Augusta Lane, which were thoroughly discussed last time, and East Juniper Avenue, there's a concern about the increased traffic once the first phase of development opens, making it difficult for vehicles leaving Augusta to turn left onto Juniper. If a signal is not in the current plans to be ready by then, we were hoping that maybe a three-way stop would be established just to protect us as we're trying to leave our residence. Okay. Did you have something else? Because they want us to go fast. Mr. Miller had a few comments, maybe? No, are you good? Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
No, I just didn't know whether or not if you wanted to take turns and go through with the questions.
I think we're good. Are we good? We're good. Okay.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this particular item?
Eric Lee, 1725 Shalley Court. I'm pretty far from this, but I'm kind of in that sphere of influence because we've waited a long time to get a development like this, where we might actually have a grocery store on that side of town. The gas station's going to be a big plus for us. But the last speaker brought up an interesting question. I'm sure there's going to be landscape buffer between the buildings and the wall that will help. But one of the things that I just thought about is, and I've never really cared for this, the center divider down Juniper, that's probably going to have to be modified because you have sightlines now that are blocked by trees. Usually, a center divider on that type of an environment doesn't have tall trees, it has low-growing shrubbery. That way, you can see vehicles both ways. Because I know what she's talking about. If she comes out of that one street before Augusta, it's difficult to see traffic coming eastbound on Juniper. So that might be something we have to consider as far as that center divider goes, is a modification there. But other than that, I think the project will be worthwhile. It'll be, it'll take time, we know that. But it'll be nice to see the commercial development on that side of town finally take root.
Okay. Anyone else? Going once, twice. Okay. We'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. And Scott, do you want to address those concerns?
Yeah, I can answer a few of them. One of the conditions that we did modify from the input from the commission was provide for landscaping on the block wall. So we provide for shrubbery, trees, and growing vines. So I was trying to scan through this 400-and-some-page document to get the exact condition, but I know that was added between the commission meeting and your meeting. That kind of dampens the sound, also provides for some aesthetic relief, and helps with graffiti abatement. So that's one of the things that we did modify. As far as the proximity being close, yes, it's closer than the other ones that were mentioned. In our code, we actually are allowed to have zero, basically zero clearance. You can build a commercial building up against another one on a commercial lot. And I was going to check through the code for commercial versus residential, and I think the minimum might be 25 feet. So I don't know that I have an answer for you specifically at this point. I mean, could it be shifted or moved? Again, this is the large-scale development application review process. Down the road, we'll review each one as it comes in. But when you start to modify it too much, it does affect the connectivity points for transportation, also potentially loses some parking. I guess the only way that I could respond is that this is a planned development project. It has flexibility for setbacks. It probably far exceeds the minimum required under your general commercial code. But we don't know the exact location at this point. We don't know who the tenant will be. That will, that's going to be up to the market. This may not end up being a grocery store. It could end up being a different major in the future. As far as the height goes, again, that's to be determined. It will have to follow along with basically the general requirements of your code, which is typically 35 feet, although they could exceed that for multiple stories, provided that special approvals would come through you. In that case, we'd have to have to do another public hearing and come back for review. At this point, we're not aware of any intention for more than single story, but we also don't have the exact height of the final building. We do encourage the use of ground-mount equipment to the greatest extent possible to try to screen the, you know, the view of it from the public right-of-way. Typically, a backyard is in public right-of-way, but that's something we do try to do to the best extent that we can. Can't guarantee that all equipment can be relocated off of the roof, but that is part of the design guidelines that we work with, and we do try to encourage when we do the actual plan review part of the project. As far as noise goes, yes, they're going to be required, as it states in the environmental document, to comply with all the noise ordinances for the city. So that means during construction, and limited during the hours that we have that have been established. If there are issues going on, on an ongoing basis, once this potential tenant could be in operation, typically, they'd have to file a noise complaint through the city's police department. But again, there's no special provisions allowing them to have louder noise than anybody else. It's under the same guidelines as everybody else. A question came up about closed-circuit TV. Obviously, we don't have building plans, we don't have safety plans with any of those. We actually don't review plans related to closed-circuit TVs. It's just to be determined. I can't answer that at this time. There's no way I could do that for you or for the public at this point. With regard to the concerns about traffic, I think what I might do is have Jose talk a little bit about the signal at Augusta, when it would be conditioned. He can maybe even give a little bit better explanation than I could about what the methodology is for reviewing this. And he might be able to kind of answer under what scenario, what the method might be to look at a three-way stop. But I would have to ask for his help on that situation, given that it involves traffic. I hope that kind of addresses the bulk of the questions that you had. Again, a lot of this is to be determined because we're dealing with future uses that are going to be specific. But again, we've tried to incorporate to the best that we can right now mitigations to hopefully avoid issues with related to the visibility noise. I can tell you that one of the requirements that we have is for screen lighting. That's basically lighting to be screened to the extent it can, to not, you know, have glare. The question came up about, you know, will the block wall be on the property line or will it be somewhere else? We had a similar issue like this one when the shopping center happened at the Atwater Marketplace. That's the center near Bellevue and went away. And if you look there now, essentially what happened was the builder put the block wall up on what they felt the property line was. And in some cases, they found that the residential fences were over the property line and some they were behind it. But what happened was the contractor put the block wall in, and then typically, the residential folks that had abutting properties would remove them. At the time of development, could they remove one and put one up? That could possibly happen, but that is really not our issue. That would be between the tenant, the developer, and the resident. Our requirement is basically to provide that they have the conditions for block wall that meets the requirements of your code for separations of uses and for noise. But as far as their fencing, how it changes, we've seen it happen before. And like I said, in some cases, it added some property. In some cases, when their fence was in the wrong spot, it took it away. But it has been done, and it does work. You have examples of cohabitation side-by-side, we have residential and commercial uses, and it can work. So I hope that addresses those questions. I'll ask Jose to talk a little bit about traffic and specifically about Augusta.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Jose Benavides. I'm with JLB Traffic Engineering. My office address is 1300 East Shaw, Suite 103, Fresno, California, 93710. Regarding this project, the conditions on this project for the northwest parcel or parcel map is that access to that piece of property will be largely right-in, right-out for the most part. They will have some lifts in along Buick, but no lifts out. And some of the reason with this is that we want to reduce traffic-type of issues. Access to Juniper from the Augusta alignment is conditioned only upon the installation of a traffic signal. So at such time that parcels, there are specific parcels that are outlined that if they develop, they'll have to put in a signal. Or any parcel that wishes to obtain access at that point will need to install that traffic signal and do signal interconnect with the existing signal at Buick-Juniper.
Mr. Rivera has a question for you.
Yeah, could you point out on the map of the sections that you're talking about, when which sections come in and which they're the traffic signal?
The pointer doesn't work for screens, but this is the area that Jose is talking about
So the... What specific parcels, though, have to come into play for the traffic signal by this plan?
It's mostly the major parcels on the west side, but any that wishes to obtain access from that point, they can't, it's, the condition is set up, if you wish to obtain access, you're going to install a signal. The other access point off of Buick, right now, you have some full median openings. They're conditioned that unless they want to do some further studies to prove to us and the city that you won't have traffic operational issues, that they're going to install a median worm to prohibit lifts out. So by that, we should minimize those traffic operational issues. When the signal goes up at Augusta, one of the comments was that there is some potential, there's some concerns with visibility looking to the west. The median, just to install the signal, the median needs to be modified on the west side, and by that, they're take, they would be taking out quite a bit of that median and doing a median nose, which would not have the ability to have any trees in it. So that could be added, that we make sure that visibility is adequate for us so that we provide a stopping site distance.
So what you're saying, then, if anyone, if they have any one of those that come in, they would be responsible with a stoplight?
Anyone that wishes, there's a few.
Because, you know, my question is because if the owner-developer wants to do one piece and then leave everything else up for the future, you know, I want to, I want to know specifically what's going to happen for, you know, when the rest of it comes. Because the next guy could say, "Well, there's not going to be coming in that much for us. We're only one building." It depends. I mean, this is not being presented as, as like a shopping center, like what we've had all over the city of Atwater. I mean, things can come in piecemeal, from my understanding. So I want to make it clear that, you know, one building comes in, oh, you're responsible for the traffic signal. No, there's two. I'm only, we're only going to bring in this much more. So, you know, I think there's danger there, coming up to the future council saying, "Well, we're not really going to be bringing in that much more," even though, I mean, your study shows that another signal is needed. So...
The condition, the way it's written, is they're not allowed to even add a driveway at that location without installing a signal.
So it could be one business, and then they, they're required then?
Yes. And anyone that wishes to obtain access, or there's also some specific parcels that have to do it.
So, okay. That's why I was asking the parcels.
It's not, I know when we went through the review, we had some conversations with the traffic engineer that prepared the study and the property owner where they wanted to allow more time. And I said, our position was that it's currently, traffic at that location is currently real close to going to where it is going to be an operational issue, so we don't want to wait until it is. So when you want access, you provide a signal, and that makes it things better. Yeah, that's, one of the changes that you'll also see on Buick Road on the south leg, it's currently the high school, even though it's signed to not make any lifts out to go southbound, they still do. And we did talk to them and said, "With this project, we're going to require them to install a median." The developer said, "Fine, we'll modify the median to eliminate that illegal movement." So you'll see that changing. At such time that the, I think it's parcel three on the southwest parcel map.
Is that it, Mr. Rivera?
Yes, thank you.
Pro Tim Bergman?
You're talking about this traffic study. Was it done during the school year, when school was out? Because that makes a significant amount of difference of the amount of traffic that goes up and down.
The counts, if I recall, I can look back, but I believe they were done in November of 2014, 2015. I think it was 2014. So school was in session. I know I had them, we had them redo some counts for the same concerns.
Mr. Vineyard?
While we're in that same location, you talked about the dedication of the southbound lane off of Juniper. I mean, we currently have a southbound dedicated lane. So my question is, is that going to be converted to a straight or southbound lane? Or is we are actually going to make a dedicated southbound lane and then have two eastbound lanes as well?
You mean the southbound right-turn lane on Buick?
Mm-hmm. Off of Juniper onto Buick.
Off of Juniper onto, so the eastbound? Eastbound?
Going westbound, going eastbound, correct.
Yeah. That'll be a dedicated.
Right now, it's a dedicated.
Right now, it's a through right?
No, right now, it's a dedicated right.
Well, it is, but with the plan is that... Well, it is, but with, with, with the plan is that long-term, we're supposed to have two eastbound lanes. So with this project, you'll have the ability to have two eastbounds, so that in the future, you don't have to modify that intersection, and you'll still have a dedicated right-turn lane on top of that.
Okay. So, so my question is, we could make that a eastbound or right-hand lane now, if we needed to, correct? Because right now, as far as I know, it's just a dedicated southbound lane.
Southbound, east, east, I guess I'm getting confused. That, that direction is eastbound, but yeah, I mean, right now, you have a left, a through, and a right, but with, with the project, you'll have a left, two throes, and a right, so they can do a lane drop across the street.
So they're going to take out the sidewalk middle or make that lane drop then?
Yes.
Thank you.
Please. Okay. My only concern on traffic is where we show the fast food, right there across from the high school. It's been a concern of mine since I saw the mapping of this, and I know that this is only conceptual at this time, but I hate to see that as a magnet for kids dashing across Buick and getting greased out there, going over to get a hamburger or something. So I just, I just want to make that point for the record, that, man, you know, I know how kids are. I was one once, and I'm not going to go up to a crosswalk if I can take the, the point of least resistance, so to speak, or it's straight across Buick. So I don't know if there's some way to get, get around that or whatever, but in any case, that's my one concern with respect to traffic. Mr. Raymond?
Will this project deal with the northbound lane on Buick at the M.I.D. Canal, where it narrows into one lane? Will this allow for widening?
No, there's no improvements past the north boundary of the lot. The issue there, if you look at it, is that the, the bridge is wide enough, but there's right-of-way needed on both the south and north side of the bridge, on the east side, to make that the full width. And so, no, this is not addressing that issue. Mayor, Council, I just wanted to just kind of point out, we, we went through, I'm going to guess, seven different reviews of the traffic study. We knew that was the most important, significant piece of this, and we knew, given that this is going to be developed piecemeal over time, that we had to find a way to kind of get what needed to be done, done when it's needed. And so the applicant really just wanted to set up a fee program where someone will come in and will pay a fee for the share for everything. Well, the problem with the fee program is, is that you never collect all the funds to do all the work. It puts all the responsibility on the city to do the work, and we still never get the funds to do all of it. And so the compromise was to come up with a parcel-based, specific implementation program, and that's what the, what, how it's outlined, how it's put in there. And to the extent that we could, like as Jose mentioned about Augusta, we made it such that if anyone wants to use that drive aisle or put it in, put it in, that's what the signal's required. We tried to be very stringent on that. So although I know there's some concern about, we don't know what's going to happen specifically, I understand that, but we think that the mitigation measures were written in such a way that they, they try to comprehensively address all those concerns to, to make sure that what gets done, gets done.
The only, well, I'll let it go. Any other comments or questions from the council? If not, boy, I'll tell you, I'm sure glad that something like this is coming along, and my understanding is, is that AM PM is looking to already have a gas station mini-mart type thing right already on the corner of Juniper and Buick. So that looks like to be the number one right there, so that's a good revenue generator, and I just hope that the rest of the place falls together as quickly as the interest in that one corner, so...
Mayor, there was one other point I did want to make, just so that you're aware of it. Before the map can be finalized, Mr. Romero and his organization will go back, and they'll get all the, the map ready to be in a situation where it can be recorded. We have very explicit conditions that we'll work with the city attorney's office on. There will be a implementate, there will basically be an improvement agreement that has to be signed by the applicant, and it has language in it that requires the formation of a bond. The bond is basically our security to make sure that the improvements that need to get done can get done. If someone were to take the project on and failed in the implementation of one of these mitigation measures, that bond is there to allow us to use it to cash out and go back and implement. So we've, we've kind of addressed some of those potential issues as well, to make sure that we're ready for it. Oh, I see. Traffic engineer pointed out that, Mayor, to kind of respond to the concern you had about pedestrian safety, you know, I mean, one of the things we could look at could be a pedestrian safety fence through the median. That's pretty effective in blocking it. Unfortunately, you know, you still have to have safety and common sense. You know, I would hope that the school, the parents, the police department, all encourage people to use the appropriate way to, to walk, which is the crosswalk. That's why it's there, that's the safest place. But consistently, I know you see it, the public sees it, I see it, the people crossing all over the place on Wenton Way and Bellevue, it's not safe, it's just not safe. And, and so, you know, we could try to kind of foresee all the issues and try to solve all the issues, but the bottom line is people still have to use good common sense and safety. But that could be something we could be looked at. It, it's not an issue that we've addressed with the applicant before, but there are some programs out there that I think might fit under if it truly becomes an issue that we could look into, to getting some assistance or funding.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Like I say, I was a kid once.
Yes.
Once. And, you know, I, I mean, high school kids, you know, typically are no different, no matter where you're at, and they're all ten-foot tall and bulletproof. It's just the way it is, you know, so...
Right.
Okay. We'll, I guess, address that when the time comes, so... Is there anything else, Scott, that you might have?
I think that's it. Just to kind of go back through a little bit with regard to the exact action that you're being asked to take tonight. We've taken testimony from the public, we've reviewed, provided some feedback to the questions and comments that came up. So tonight, you'd be, you're being asked to consider the mitigated negative declaration, that's in the environmental document, along with the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. So we're, we're going to need a, a motion and approval for that. In addition to that, you have four different resolutions, twenty nineteen, twenty-nine, fourteen dash sixteen, you have fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. Fourteen has to do with the site layout, the master plan. The fifteen, twenty-nine, fifteen, has to do with the amenities, it's a final development plan. And then sixteen and seventeen are the maps, the tentative parcel map approvals, and so those are the specific items that you're being asked to consider tonight. And again, this has been through your commission, they reviewed it, they recommended your approval. The suggested changes they had for the resolutions have been incorporated, so we've respected their thoughtfulness in the project, and, you know, we're basically ready tonight to have you take action so we can move forward.
Okay. Mr. Vineyard?
You mentioned the couplers, those didn't need to be put into each resolution?
They're already in.
Already in, okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Mayor, as well as the conditions related to providing landscaping on the block wall, those, those are the, the main two issues that came up that were added to it.
Okay. We got everything in now, right?
I think we're good.
Okay. Who, who committed all that to memory to make a motion?
So moved.
And I'll second. Okay, is there any other comments or questions for Mr. McBride? If not, call for the question.
Rivera?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion carries. City Council Matters. City Council comments and requests for future agenda items.
Mr. Raymond, how about you start us off?
I have nothing today.
All righty. Mr. Bergman?
Yes, I just wanted to confirm with the city clerk. I had talked to the city manager, we were going to have a possible action item regarding the city's master plan at this meeting, but he had asked it to be put off until the first meeting in September, so he can attend. Just want to confirm that that's on. And I had also talked to him about the possibility of having a discussion item on the, just to be fiscally responsible, that we look into having private counsel for the city, and I want to confirm that he has forwarded that as well. And if not, I will fill out the paperwork in the morning.
Mr. Vineyard?
First of all, I want to pass the, my condolences to the Olzak-McDonald families. Mr. Olzak's mother passed away recently, so I want to pass on condolences to that, to the both families. Second, there are several agenda items I've passed on to the city manager already, so he has those with the paperwork. Thirdly, it's just amazing, our police department, it thinks, items we get from Chief Joseph, and how observant our officers are, both when they're on duty and off duty, events that have occurred just in the last couple of weeks, and things they see, and the due diligence they have. A police officer is never off-duty, whether they're in uniform or not in uniform, and our officers take that to, to the utmost limit. And, and they're always out watching, and, and that's, that's a real advantage to this community, because they have made several arrests because officers that are off-duty have seen things and have turned those events in, and arrests have been made, and I want to congratulate Chief Joseph and the police department for their due diligence on what they're, they're partake and what they're doing to, to make this city safer. You know, I can't say anymore about that. It's, it's just they, they really take pride in what they're doing. And I see the changes that they're doing within the department, and it just shows, and they're elevating their pride in, in what they, they want to put out to the citizens. And they get, they get some, put down sometimes because of how they respond to people, but they're out there doing what they're supposed to be doing, and they're protecting us. And, and I think what we need to do is, when we see an officer, we need to thank them. Doesn't matter what for, we just need to say thank you every chance we get, because without them, I think the city would be really in deep trouble, so... And other than that, I think we just, as a city council, we need to continue working together. If, if we, we don't always go plan very well, we don't always get together and probably talk as much as we should, and we probably need to work on that. But I think that's something we need to work on in the future. We need to get things done and not postpone things and put them off for long periods of time. I think that's an injustice to the city. So I would like to see us try to work where we're not putting things off for six, eight months a year, and get things going, so... That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Rivera?
No comments. Okay. A couple of things. Foster Farms is going to have a job fair. It's going to be August twenty-fifth, that's Thursday, ten o'clock till one o'clock. And for those that don't know where Foster Farms is, out in Livingston, twelve-thirty-seven Main Street. So anybody that's looking for employment, Foster Farms has historically been a pretty good place to be, so give it a shot. The twenty-seventh, next Saturday, there is going to be, and you've probably heard the radio announcements for it, but if not, Cool Cats out on Motel Drive in Merced, from two until seven, is going to have a veterans' benefit type of a program going on. Dave Luna will be down there hosting, I guess he's going to be kind of a DJ type thing out there, but in any case, money that's raised there is going to veterans' programs and also specifically to the Honor Flight Program, transporting veterans from World War II and now the Korean War to the memorials in D.C. So if you have some time on the twenty-seventh, on Saturday, two to seven o'clock, drop on in. Lauren James, the owner of Cool Cats, is putting on this program down there, and I think it's a really nice gesture to do something to help out the vets. It was suggested to me by Chairman Bryce of the CDRC that we have a joint meeting of CDRC, City Council, and also to include the Measure H Committee, and I think that's, that would be a good idea. I was looking towards having a town hall type meeting towards the end of September, possibly first part of October. So if, Council, if you can, and Gary, and Eric, if you guys can all put together a series of dates that look like they may work for you, please forward them, and let's, let's make that happen, and invite the public in, and we'll go ahead and do something along those lines. And let the people see, the CDRC, which has been referred to as the Super Commission, you know, for parks, traffic, and public works, or Planning Commission. So let's see about doing that. And last but not least, this, yesterday morning, former supervisor Lynn Davis passed away. Lynn had been in rather declining health, and it caught up with him yesterday morning. I don't have details as to any funeral arrangements, that type of thing, but I'm sure they'll be forthcoming. So I would like to include, along with Lynn this evening, I would like to also include Gregel's ex-mother, and adjourn our meeting tonight in the memory of those two folks. God bless you for your time on this earth. This meeting is adjourned.[1772.88][1772.88][applause]
Wonderful. Thank you. 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 Thank you.